Good evening, everyone. The time is now five o'clock and we're getting ready to start our city council meeting. In accordance with the American Disability Act of 1990, if you require disability-related modification or accommodation to attend or to participate in this meeting, including auxiliary aids or services, please call the City Clerk's office at 310-952-1720 at least forty-five, forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Government Code Section 549, 54.2. Public Information: The public may address the members of the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. On are any items on the agenda of the city council during the designated public comment period? There will be two oral communication sessions, one for the agendized items, comments about items on the agenda, and the other for non-agendized items, comments about items not on the agenda. The oral communication portion on the agenda is limited to a duration of one hour unless otherwise approved by the city council. Comment time is normally three minutes, depending on the number of speakers. Public viewing available by live stream on the city website. The meeting will be streamed live over the internet via CarsonCA.gov or YouTube at youtube.com backslash C, City of Carson, California official YouTube page, or cable TV, Spectrum Channel 35, or ATT Channel 99. If you are not able to attend the meeting in person, public comments can be submitted before the meeting via email. Public comments can be emailed to cityclerk@carsonca.gov. The cutoff time to submit any email communication is 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Written comments can be dropped off at the City Clerk's office or at the white box outside City Hall. The cutoff time to submit any written communications is 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Written communications or comments could be dropped off at the City Clerk's office or the white box, or any email received will not be read aloud at the council meeting, but will be circulated to the city council and incorporated into the record. Like a call to order, the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority meeting, roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilmember Rojas?
Present.
Councilmember Dear? Councilmember Hicks?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hilton?
Present.
Mayor Davis Holmes?
Mayor Davis Holmes will be absent tonight. Her absence is excused, but she will be absent tonight, and I will be leading the meeting tonight. I will ask for a flag salute from Councilwoman Arlene Rojas.
Please stand.
At this time, we have the invocation by Revan Luau. Come on, Pastor. Come on, say your name. From our Samoan Congregational Community Church, Pastor, please state your name.
Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. I'm Luau Leasliolangi with SC mention, Samoan Congregational Community Church on Carson Street 324. Let's go before the Lord. Reading for today's lectionary from the International Bible Reading Association, Judges 5, verse 3. "Hear, O kings; give ear, O princesses. To the Lord I will sing; I will make melody to the Lord, the God of Israel." As we gather at this moment to meet as a council, the verse that I just read is about singing the victory because of God's love. So, and that's the hope of God for the covenantal people, and I believe this is God's hope and our hope in God for the city, that we will be victorious as we have faith in God, in our resurrected Lord. May God bless continually upon this city and all of the United States of America. Let us pray. O majestic God, our Lord and Savior, the triune God, we come before you this moment as a city council and all of those who are here to listen to the meeting, we offer you all the praise and thanksgiving for your continual blessings upon this city government and all of the city and this city council. Thank you for the commitment and service for all of the people of this city and this county and the United States of America. May all the honor and glory be unto you, O Lord. We ask for the power of your Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit to come upon each and every one of us. We are mindful of the mayor who is not here. May you be with her. Be with each and every one of us, each council member, so that we can be empowered, that we can have the power of discernment, so that we can share and talk about the goodness of your love, so that we can help the city, so that each citizen can be blessed, can be taken care of in whatever capacity and need that each citizen has today. May we start with you and may we end with you, and wherever we may go from here, we ask for your blessings to be upon each and every one in the city council, and also all the people in the city, the citizens, LA County, and all of the United States and the world. May you protect them from harm and violence and war, and may we find peace in you, especially during this time of Easter, where we celebrate the resurrected Christ. And we pray, Lord, that you please forgive us for our sins, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, so much for your partnership. To our city clerk, let the record reflect that Councilmember Jim Dear has arrived. We're going to go into closed session. I was wondering if there's any oral comments concerning closed session?
Thank you, Mr. MPT. I did note Councilman Dear's arrival, and I did not receive any comment cards for closed session items.
City Attorney, would you give us our announcements for closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Item number two will not be considered. I asked the city clerk and staff to push it to the next council meeting. Item number three, the council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel on the matter of CAM Carson LLC versus City of Carson, case number 20STCB16461. Pardon me? Okay. And item number four will not be considered. We'll just push it to the next council meeting. We should be less than half an hour.
Okay.
If you wanted to finish the meeting soon.
You feel like short meetings?
I do, I do. But we will reconvene as soon as closed session is over, so stay nearby, because we may come back before six o'clock. So, stay nearby. Thank you so much. We're going to recess into closed session, everyone. We're going to reconvene from closed session. Madam City Attorney, can you please report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Item number two was not considered. Item number four was not considered. Both items were continued to the next council meeting. The council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel on the matter of CAM Carson LLC versus City of Carson, case number 20STCB16461. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. We're going to have a report from our Captain Jones of the LA County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Captain.
Mayor Protem, rest of the council, city manager, and the entire staff. Couple updates from the station since our last meeting. We had a school safety and protocol meeting with LA Unified School Police a couple weeks ago. It was very, very good meeting so that we can make sure we're on one accord to help protect our children in the case of we have an unfortunate emergency that we hope we never have. And so, it was a very good meeting so that we can make sure we protect them. Last weekend, our team was able to participate in the Earth Day event at Dolphin Park, so they enjoyed that event. Our Citizens Academy is wiring down, coming down to the last two weeks. Tomorrow, they'll be doing their jail tour, and then next week, they'll be graduating. So, there'll be another group of great residents who will be graduating from the Citizens Academy, and we think they're going to continue to add and help us work collectively to ensure that our city is a great place to be at. On the 24th, we'll be having a coffee with the captain event at the Cavalry Chapel off of Vermont. I mean, that's going to be from 10:00 to 11:00 AM. On the 27th, in partnership with the city, we'll be doing the prescription takeback, drug takeback event from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then, on May 1st, we will be having a pizza with the police, pizza with Carson Station event at Chuck E. Cheese, and we're going to have it in the evening time at 5:00 PM from 5:00 to 7:00, so we can have as many families and children out at that event. Just know that the deputies that you guys pay to do a good job in this city have been working hard. Year-to-date, they've taken eighteen guns off the street and kept people from being a victim of violent crime after that. Yes, thank you. They responded to over 11,000 calls for service and made over 7,000 proactive investigative observation stops to prevent crime from happening. So, I'm very happy about the hard work and dedication that our men and women at Carson Sheriff's Station are doing to ensure we stay safe. One last thing before I sit down. So, we noticed in one of our neighboring cities, obviously, this time of year, we're at proms, we're at close to graduations and different things coming up. End of the school year, we noticed a couple senior pranks that have been very dangerous. And the main one I want to really talk about, there's been a senior prank involving toy guns and water guns we've seen in some neighboring cities. And I think we all agree, although it may be fun, maybe games, some guns that they're using can appear realistic, and they can have some very catastrophic results. So, this is a danger not only to the public, but also to law enforcement. So, what we're asking is parents, adults, guardians, grandparents, have a conversation, educate your young ones who you mentor or talk to, because we don't want to see anyone be hurt, because this is a very, very important matter. I mean, this is just FYI, California Pinot Code 20170 Section A, it states, "No person should openly display an imitation firearm in a public place." So, I just want to make sure our students are educated. We know they're excited to be graduating, going on to the next phase of their life, but we have to still be responsible and sure we don't bring any harm or danger to each other. This concludes my report for this evening. Any questions, I'm me.
Thank you, Captain, again, for the fine job that you do to see if my colleagues have any comments or questions. Jim, Councilman?
Mayor Protem. Yeah, Captain, thank you for the report. We really appreciate you coming out here at pretty much every council meeting. If you're in town, you're going to be here, it looks like, so we're real happy about that. And this type of report keeps us connected and keeps the community connected with our law enforcement. That's the type of community policing that we need in Carson, so carry on, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And your whole staff, let them know.
Yes. It's the team, it's not me.
Thank you so much, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Amazing day.
Have a great evening.
Appreciate you. Next, item number six is an update from LA County Supervisor Holly J. Mitchell's office. If you come, I believe she has a representative here tonight by the name of Cal Lee, and he's no stranger to our community. Mr. Cal?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, esteemed council members, City of Carson staff. I kind of wanted to come up here today to formally introduce myself to the residents of Carson as the Deputy of Constituent Engagement for Supervisor Holly Mitchell. As you know, Supervisor Mitchell proudly represents the diverse and vibrant communities of LA County Second District, which includes the city of Carson. I came here to shed some light on some important initiatives and events happening within our district and throughout the county, spearheaded by Supervisor Mitchell's office. The first one being maternal health. I wanted to bring attention that this week is Black Maternal Health Week, observed from April 11th to April 17th. This week serves as a crucial platform to raise awareness and advocate for solutions to address the disproportionately high maternal health challenges faced by black women and birthing people across our nation. In this regard, Supervisor Mitchell has been instrumental in expanding access to doula services across LA County. Through her motion approved by the board last year, doula care is now a Medi-Cal-covered benefit, marking a step towards addressing disparities in maternal health care. Additionally, Supervisor Mitchell's office has collaborated with the Department of Public Health to establish a hub, providing technical assistance, support, and training for women to become certified and skilled doulas under Medi-Cal. For those interested, I encourage everyone to explore the LA County African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Initiative to learn more about the services, resources, and upcoming events during Black Maternal Health Week in our district and beyond. Another thing I wanted to bring to your attention is to share the news of a groundbreaking initiative aimed at addressing the urgent need for more early care and educational professionals in our county. Supervisor Mitchell recently celebrated the launch of LA County's first high-road training partnership in the early care and education sector. This means there's going to be more innovative programs to provide participants with on-the-job training and paid work-based learning opportunities, empowering them to obtain a state-issued associate teacher permit and secure employment in the childcare sector. Those are two of the big initiatives that Supervisor Mitchell has been championing in our district, and then I wanted to go into some of the upcoming events and resources that are happening as well. We have a grant opportunity with LA 2050 Grants Challenge. This is a chance for residents to vote on issues they care about most to improve LA County. California Abundant Birth Project applications are open for a guaranteed income program providing financial support to expecting parents during pregnancy. I believe this is up to like $850 a month if you are interested in learning more about this program. Actually, $807 cash gift. For eligibility information and to apply, you can visit their website at Abundant Birth Project. The LA County also has an arts internship opportunity. We have over 200 paid internships for college students at arts organizations across LA County. LA 2050 is also giving away $1 million to improve LA County, but first, they need to know what issues you guys care about most. You can find this in 12 different languages. You can also go to LA 2050 online. I also wanted to bring light to Supervisor Mitchell's Second District Town Hall. This is an opportunity to learn about the county budget process and share feedback on community priorities. This is especially helpful for those that live in unincorporated areas, and I know the city of Carson also serves unincorporated areas like West Carson. This meeting will happen on Wednesday, tomorrow, April 17th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. You can join this virtually as well. In addition to these initiatives, Supervisor Mitchell is also hosting a film screening of Respect My Crown on Thursday, April 25th. You guys can, if you guys have anybody interested, you can always email me. I'll leave my information as well after the meeting. This film is going to be shown at Mount St. Mary's University. This documentary explores the rise of black women in California politics who have battled race and gender barriers in pursuit of equality and political power and the road they paved to achieve success. And lastly, I wanted to share Supervisor Mitchell's Racial Justice Learning Exchange. So, this month, it's going to be around advancing health equity through nature and exercise. This will be at Magic Johnson Park on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM. In closing, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the Carson City Council for your unwavering dedication to serving our community, and thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you so much, Cal. Does any of my colleagues have any questions?
Cedric, you first.
I just want to say thank Cal for that presentation, and it's always good to see you when you come out. I'll let Brittany know you were here as well.
Likewise, thank you.
My daughter and him went to school together.
Yeah?
Yes, I'd like to ask you to express our thank you to the supervisor for sending you here, and if you could give our city manager, Mr. David Roberts, your contact information, he'll disseminate it among the five of us.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
You're welcome, yes.
Cal, I wanted to go back to the Black Mental Health Week and Black Maternal Health Week, I'm sorry, Black Maternal Health Week. Is there, there's a, right after your presentation, there's the Business Growth Academy hosted by the Cal State University Dominguez Hills. Last year, through the Business Growth Academy, they had an organization that came through their Growth Academy called Image and You. That business reached out to us last week trying to figure out how they can become a part of the Maternal Health Week for, and I sent a text to the supervisor, I know that the supervisor's super busy. Is there someone that this company can contact? They wanted to make sure, to see how they could partner with the maternal health. They have an ultrasound clinic here in the city, happened to be owned by two, happened to be owned by an African-American young lady who is a resident of Carson, who went through the Growth Academy, and they reached out figuring out how they could partner with the maternal health.
Are they here tonight?
They're not here tonight, but it just so happened to collide and coincide together tonight, so if I can give them your information, maybe they can reach out to you. I had sent the supervisor a text message, but I recognize that she's busy, so maybe you text me later on, I'll text you their information.
That would be perfect.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
And I also want to say, me and Cal, we had a conversation about the library, the Martin Luther King Library, and I do want to say I have seen a positive change at the Martin Luther King Library of people not so much living out in front of the library, so I want to say thank you as well. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would like to end with this as well. If any Carson residents regarding any LA County property in the city of Carson, you can direct them to me, as I'll be their direct point of contact as well.
Thank you so much.
Perfect, perfect.
Next, we're going to have an update from the City of Carson Small Business Growth Academy hosted at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. Who's our representative for that?
Are they here?
I don't know, but we are all participants.
We have some graduates of the program, yeah.
Is, was David supposed?
Oh, she, but I don't see him.
He's not here to, he's not here just yet.
Remember, MPT, he's on the old, about six o'clock.
Okay, no problem, we'll come back.
So, that's.
Okay, we'll come, we'll come back, okay? We're a little early tonight, so we're going to handle a little city business, and we're a little early tonight.
MPT, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the City of Carson Small Growth Academy. It's the university's academy. We support it, but unless you're talking about a different program?
I'm reading from the agenda, Councilmember.
Maybe the city manager could explain that as soon as he's done in conference here. I'll ask him a question. Mr. City Manager, on this item, on number seven, the university has a program for entrepreneurs. It's a great program. We have some graduates here in the audience, some successful entrepreneurs, and going to be more successful because of the program, right? But it's a university program, it's not a City of Carson program, unless I'm, unless you know something I don't know, I'd like to find out.
Sure, yes, sir. So, I believe this program is actually part of the town and gown joint program between both the city and Cal State Dominguez Hills.
It's not the program that is the small business entrepreneur?
No, sir, that's a separate. So, this is part of the town and gown, this is a joint venture between the city and Cal State Dominguez Hills that...
Have they had any public programs yet, or is that new?
Public programs?
Yeah, with the Town and Gown Small Business Academy. It has a similar name to the university's academy, so I'd like to differentiate between the two.
Yeah, I think, and I'll let Deputy City Manager Tariq Rahmani speak to this, because they actually have a program, so I know, I think you're thinking about, there's several small business programs. There's an incubator, then there's the grant, small business grants program, and then there's this growth, Small Business Growth Academy, which is the town and gown between Cal State and the city. And so, there's that specific program, which is being highlighted this evening. Then the other program, as the incubator programs, that is something that was done through Cal State Dominguez Hills.
Okay, just clarification we needed, that's all. Thank you, MPT.
Thank you so much. We'll come back to item number seven. Is there any oral communications for matters listed on the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. There are no speaker cards for agenda items, just one for non-agenda.
I'll take that, just because we are kind of up on time, I will take that for the non-agendized item, that speaker tonight, if you're here.
Mr. Biss, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, honorable council and also city staff. I'm actually here today just to emphasize the prescription drug takeback date that's happening on April 27th. Today's the last council meeting before that day, and we got to make sure that our citizens know about it so they can drop off all of their expired and unused prescription drugs. No sharks, just to be sure, and we're working with the DEA and the Public Safety Services. We also have already visited different locations, clinics, retirement homes, pharmacies in the city of Carson to let our Carsonites know that it's happening and coming up. That's all that I wanted to remind everybody.
Thank you so much, Richard, for your advocacy and for the gentle reminder. I'd like to, if there's no more oral communication, I'd like to move ahead on the agenda, we'll come back to item number seven. I'd like to make a motion to approve the approval of the following City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority meeting minutes for April 2nd, 2024. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion, MPT.
All in favor? Let's call for the vote.
You want roll call vote, MPT?
You want to do a roll call vote?
No, 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 I thought that's what you asked for, my apologies. The motion carries.
All right.
That might take extra time to do that.
No, we don't want to do that. Item number nine, approval of the 2021 backlog of City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second. You got it.
Let's take our votes.
Motion carries, MPT.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 10 to... Like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 10 to 23.
Second the motion.
Any of my colleagues would like to pull any items?
Item 19.
Any, anybody else?
MPD, I'll pull item 15 and item 21.
So there's item 15, 19, and 21. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Without the item 15, 19, and 21.
Councilman Hicks. Motion carries, MPD.
Item number 15, please.
Yeah, item number 15, I was, caught my attention as I studied the staff report over the weekend. I'd like to get a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, councilmember. So I'll give our Director of IT, Mr. Gary Carter, an opportunity to provide a brief update and description in regards to the staff report for item number 15.
Councilmember Dear, is there a question? I did.
The base of the microphone, there's a little green light should be on. Oh.
Mayor Protem, City Council. Councilmember Dear, you had questions related to the dark fiber lease?
Yes, I see it's a 10-year lease, that's a long lease, and it's over a million dollars that we'd be approving tonight in a kind of one fell swoop.
Sure.
So could you give us a staff report, please?
Sure, so this is related to the city's disaster recovery, IT disaster recovery plans, and it's a part of a prior staff report. We have already had a contract last council meeting related to the DR site that was approved. We are connecting the city to the DR sites that we're going to set up. The equipment is, the equipment related is actually item number 16. That's related to that as well. And there's a couple reasons why. We have a five-year term for the DR sites. And if you look at the history of the staff report, it shows that when it went out to RFP, there were zero bidders. That's respective of the lack of providers that we have here in the city of Carson. We were able to get one provider to commit to provide those services. It's an investment on their part in bringing their network to the city. And we do have, we can terminate at any time, but with all likelihood, we will likely adopt and probably stay, well, we're going to stay at least five years. We could, we could cancel after five years if you wanted to, but the terms of the contract allow us to use that fiber to connect to any site that's on the, on the provider's network. Therefore, we could change our DR site, still keep the contract with the provider, and lock in the rates in today's dollars, year seven, eight, nine, 10. So it's fiscally responsible, it's a great deal. And also, that provider, bringing the investment to the city of Carson, will allow other businesses to partake of those services as well with our commitment to them.
I see, so you mentioned that you put a RFP out?
Correct.
And there were zero responders?
Correct.
And you're saying that's to a lack of the expertise in that particular field or?
Not expertise, so providers would tend to want to, you know, provide other services, called lit services, that's what like your charters would provide. That's not what we asked for, we asked for services that's related to an enterprise and our DR protocols. Someone of our size or, you know, the enterprises that we're bringing in to the city would partake of that. The college would be a good example of that as well. Folks would, a lot of providers would prefer to, you know, provide other services and not the dark fiber that we actually provided. And industry standard, so we, when we had to bid, it was either an IRU or a lease. IRUs minimum were usually 10 years.
Yeah.
10 to 20 years even is, is common. So 10 years is actually low in, in those, in that framework, so it's actually the lowest term, and that's what we agreed with. And again, the city has a termination clause that if it doesn't work out for us, we want to terminate, we can.
What notice would we have to give the company if we wanted?
It's written notice. The contract is attached, I believe it's, might be the standard 90 days, but.
90 days?
I believe so, yes.
I see. Okay, well, you know, we have fiduciary responsibility, the, the council members and as well as the staff.
Sure.
And that's why I wanted to ask these questions.
Sure.
But in your professional opinion, this company is a very good fit for the city of Carson to meet our needs?
Yes, very reputable.
Okay, well, in that case, I will move approval of staff recommendation.
Second. Gary.
Thank you.
You want to call the vote?
Councilman Dear.
Did, oh, three.
The motion carries, Mr. MPD, three yeses, one abstention, and one absence.
Gary, I just want to point out, how long have you been here?
Seven months and, I don't know, I'm not keeping track, a couple weeks.
Since you've been here, we have Wi-Fi in every park. Our infrastructure has went to the next level in seven months. Stuff that we asked to be done years ago, you came and got it done in seven months.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
And you were Mayor Protem, Protem when that happened?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, man, I appreciate it. I just wanted to point that out. So I, I, I trust you picked the right, you picked the right vendor.
Yes, sir.
Because we, we asked for free Wi-Fi when COVID happened, when people were going to Taco Bell.
Correct.
And we couldn't get it, but you got it in seven months. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point that out. David, David Ochi is here, so we will go back to number seven. David, come on up, David, and give us this presentation about this Small Growth Business Academy that we are in partnership with this wonderful Cal State Dominguez.
Well, thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Protem. I apologize for my tardiness. I've been working out a partnership with a, with a web development company for one of the projects we're working with students where we help them launch side hustle businesses in a six-hour period, right? And one of the tech partners for that, we had a meeting today and it went, I don't know if I'm supposed to put this on right, it went phenomenally well. And so we're really excited, and then we looked at the clock and said, oh my gosh, got to go buy. So, but I, my apologies, but what I'm very thankful for, not only just, you know, tech partners like that to see the vision of what Dominguez Hills and our students can do, the people in front of me, right, are part of that, that crowd that understands the vision of what CSUDH and, and the city of Carson can do together. And as many of you know with this, we just had our fourth iteration of the City of Carson Small Business Growth Academy. We had 31 teams that came through, they're Carson businesses that are under, you know, under 20 million in, or 200 employees and under 10 million in revenue. And of course, that's, that's the majority of small businesses for sure. Many of them are here tonight, I'm excited to see them again, and I would love for them to have the chance to come up and, and be recognized. But the program has gone phenomenally well. The, the partnership between the city and Dominguez Hills is really something that is, it came out of a Town and Gown event from a couple of years ago, and it's been, as somebody who was relatively new to Dominguez Hills at the time, I remember leaning over to one of the staff members in the president's office and I said, so why all the fanfare? You know, knowing nothing about any history or anything. And he said, I don't know, but you're going to make it so that this was more than just a party. And I went, huh? And that led to him saying, look, let's figure out what can we do with the city of Carson? What are the needs of the city and the community? And what are the needs that we have with our students and what we, what can we do together? And I have to tell you, when I took the job at Dominguez Hills, I did not plan on doing a Small Business Growth Academy, but it is one of my favorite things in my role as the, the executive director of the Innovation Incubator there. So I just want to say thank you to the council for the support. We already have 60 companies who've applied that are in the backlog. So in terms of a renewal for next year, I'm geared up, ready to go, so count me in if you guys are up for it. We're excited to do it again, we have little tweaks we want to do, maybe extend it by an extra week or two, you know, that sort of thing. So thank you for that, but honestly, what we're doing is, is peanuts compared to the work that the small businesses do. Honestly, they deserve the, the recognition. So with your permission, I'd love to let them come up and at least stand in front of you and cheer them on.
Absolutely, give us, give us their elevator speech. David, I only have one tweak, I only have one tweak, I have, I have three little kids, so it's hard for me to get there that early morning graduation. Let's, let's do a graduation lunch or something like that, okay? So that's, that's all.
That's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah, let's do a graduation lunch, but let's, let's hear these great people, give us your, your name, your business.
There it is.
Your Instagram, your website, something, how we can follow you.
I love it, well, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, David, he's been so wonderful. This is a, a program that has changed my life in so many ways, so many avenues are still going on, so it's definitely needed, it's expanding, it's here to really expand our mission. I know mine is to financial education, bringing financial literacy to the everyday individual, and teaching them how to actually implement that education. So my goal is to get this into schools in Carson, businesses, but really just how people take power in. So David did a phenomenal job along with everybody else that part of the program, so definitely keep it up and thank you all.
Say your name and your business name.
Sorry, my name is Antoinette Moran, I'm with the How Many Works Learning Center.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rashonda Siska, I'm with High Pressure Designs Apparel Printing and Embroidery. I'm a resident here in Carson, and I'd love to work with you. But the, the tools that we were given in this program were phenomenal. It's definitely taken my business to levels that I can't even imagine. So the books that we've read, the, the resources, I still stay connected with the, the instructors that were a part of the class. So what, the tools that we, that we have are, I mean, just immeasurable, and I just appreciate the, what you've invested in, the residents and the city of Carson. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Carla Costilla with Masters Trucking Academy. So we teach people how to drive the commercial vehicles, and this program just changed our, our business, and we network with each other and we work with each other, so it was great. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Travell Sawyer, I'm with Carson Protective Services. You guys may have seen a few of our officers at near the 99 cent store, that plaza over there. I won't take up too much of your time other than to say that I really have appreciated this program and thank you guys for supporting it.
Hello, good evening, my name is Yacenia Campos, and I'm with Kennameka Inc. We're an engineering, design, and manufacturing company here in the city of Carson. I appreciate all of the support that David and his team have provided us. We just did a great job at collaborating and working together, and truly appreciate all the education that we received during that class. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sharon Dentbury. I'm the owner of Forest Savvy Traveling Travel Agency. I enjoyed the program to the fullest. I learned more about my travel, the backdrop to what I need to do to make my travel business successful, and I enjoyed the program, and thank you so much for having it.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Heather, and I am the owner of Simply Sweet by Heather. I'm a pastry chef, I bake a lot of things, but my specialty is brownies, so if you guys went to.
So what I told you means every first.
I didn't bring.
She said brownies?
Tuesdays, make them and drop them off to us, we'll, we'll try them out, we'll try them out.
All right, so I'm glad I went through the incubator, because there were some business parts of my business that I was kind of like not doing, and so I got inspired to, you know, to kind of go back to the foundation so I can build a better foundation so that I can take my business further.
Your brownies are delicious.
Thank you.
Her brownies are delicious. David Ochi, he's amazing. 7:00 a.m., we're getting in class, he's, he's comical, he, he makes it very entertaining. Someone who, you know, hadn't stepped foot in class for a very long time, he made it just, just, you know, able to do. My name is Shara Simian, AMG Design Company, I do embroidery, printing. I met some amazing, awesome, successful women and men, and I thank you guys for doing this very much, thank you.
We thank all of you.
Thank you.
We would like to, if, David, if you would indulge us, we would like to, as a city council, come down and take pictures. Also, I want to let everybody know that this, this airs like on YouTube, and so everybody, I saw you with your phone taping, you, you was like, I'm going to get my commercial. So why don't y'all go splice it, make y'all own reel, all right? Why don't you go back and get it and make your own reel and put it on your social media so everybody can see you guys presenting in front of the city council? You got your free commercial and all that good stuff. Splice it. I'm particularly excited because Elizabeth, she was a part of one of the first incubators, and now she is a contractor with the city of Carson, so it's amazing what these things, these doors can open for you, so.
As they, as they come up for this photo, I just want to make one last comment, and that is, there have been 91 companies now that this council has put their trust and energy behind, and I know that every one of those 91 companies has had, has been impacted in a way that is making, is making a dent and moving the needle. I'm going to put it on the record here publicly, since some of you have heard this story more than once. We are going to have alumni meeting, so these 91 get together once every month or every other month, and they just get together, have a coffee. The biggest thing is not the growth that they've had in their business, not the support they felt while they were there. What really has been amazing is how they have gelled, and you heard some of that, where that we've collaborating with people, they're working together, they're cross-promoting their businesses. It really is going to have a multiplier effect as we grow. So thank you again to the council, and congratulations to all of the, all the participants, those here and who couldn't make it. Thank you all.
Thank you, David, for all the work that you do as well.
To my esteemed colleagues, let's, let's, let's grace the dais. Let's go to item number 19. Item number 19, consider approving purchase of four Panview basketball, volleyball, wrestling scoreboards from Dykottis Inc. for Veterans Sports Complex and Forcia, and a public works agreement with Custom Signs Inc. to remove and install, move scoreboards at Veterans Sports Complex, Forcia Park, and Stevenson Park.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem, for this. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, for this item. We'll have our Director of Community Services, Mr. Michael Whitaker, provide a brief update.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Very good. How are you?
Doing great, doing great. Just a little bit of background on this item. The Department of Community Services Recreation Park Maintenance has determined that the indoor scoreboards at Forcia Park and Veteran Sports Complex require immediate replacement. All are near or past their life cycle, do not operate, or need to be repaired, but spare parts are obsolete or hard to find. Therefore, staff requesting city council approval for the purchase of four new Panview basketball, volleyball, wrestling scoreboards through purchase order with Daktronics Incorporated, an authorized dealer, utilizing the cooperative purchase bidding exemption pursuant to CMC 2016-11 and Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, available at, and it shows the website where you can get this information. The purchase for a total not to exceed cost of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and six cents. Staff also recommend approval of a public works contract with Custom Signs Inc. for not to exceed contract of twenty-eight thousand and two hundred dollars for the removal of existing scoreboards at Forcia Park, Veteran Sports Complex, and installation of two of the new scoreboards at Forcia Park and the other two at Veteran Sports Complex, as well as moving the two current scoreboards at Stevenson Park to better locations next to the basketball hoops. So this was brought to you today as a bit of a cleanup. We have replaced all of the scoreboards at all of our parks here in the City of Carson. And so we finished with the outside first. We are now moving towards the inside. We have four basketball gyms, and we are actually fixing all of the scoreboards. Some of the scoreboards are in very, very strange areas. So the coach has to turn around or stand on the court and look backwards to see the score to the game or how much time is left. Forcia Park is similar. And so this will give us brand-new scoreboards at all of our basketball gymnasiums. But on top of that, it will also be placed in the right positions so that the coaches, as well as the residents of Carson, can enjoy the game and see what the scores to the games are.
I want to applaud you for bringing this forward. I've been at numerous games now that my children are playing. And some of the scoreboards are out, some of the scoreboards, when kids have eight, it looks like three. Some of the scoreboards aren't working. So I'd like to make a motion to...
I pulled this item.
Oh, well, go ahead then, make the motion.
The main reason why I pulled it, so the residents would know that we have a department that is on top of everything, and they're making sure these scoreboards are where they need to be at. You know, our parks are very well received. They're used heavily. You know, I go back to the day that the only thing in the community was our parks. We did everything from movies to the babysitting to everything for our parks. So we still have that mentality in the city. And I just want to thank Mike Whitaker and also the staff for putting this before us and letting us have this. Because again, the scoreboards that we have in some of the parks, I think, were there before, back when I was a volunteer, and that they need to be changed. And as me being a director and going through the entire process, needs to be changed. And 2024 is that year. So with that being said, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Mr. MPT, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. Didn't want to move over Cedric since he wanted to approve the board. Item number twenty-one, consider resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three approving and updating successor memorandum of understanding between the City of Carson and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME, part-time union, local eight oh nine, city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. This item will be presented for a brief update by our Assistant City Manager, Dr. Robert Lennox.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. This item is technically a bit of a cleanup item. As you're aware, the successor MOUs for the various full-time represented groups came forward to council a little over a year ago. The part-time MOU successor agreement had not been addressed yet, and this actually does that cleanup. The notable edits within the MOU agreement include reflecting approvals that the council has already made. For example, things such as the one-time lump sum premium pay that came for essential workers that did apply to part-time employees at the time, that is reflected in here, as well as all of the updated salary schedules, since those adjustments had been approved by council previously. And finally, the date range for the MOU was also updated to this agreement. That's pretty much the extent of the updates.
Jim, I believe you were the one that pulled this item?
That is correct, yes. I want to thank the staff for bringing this forward because it's long overdue. And this is a type of, I mentioned cleanup item. It's a generic term for it, but, you know, it took a lot of work to get it right, and the city manager did get it right. So I want to praise David Roberts for that. And remind people, I know, MPT, you don't like to go down memory lane, but how'd you do in history class when you were in school? You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Just kidding you a little bit. But about twenty years ago, I was a new council member. And a lot of the part-time employees were talking to me as a new councilman about why they aren't getting COLAs, why they aren't getting, you know, raises when the full-time employees are getting raises. And I suggested to them that they join the union. So in order for that to happen, the unions had to accept that idea of having part-time employees. And I'm just very proud to say that bringing the employees and the union together in a part-time bargaining unit situation was really beneficial to them and also beneficial to the people of the City of Carson and the city government and management in general, and of course, to the council members. So it was a win-win situation all the way around. And I just want to, again, thank the staff for finally getting this to happen. So I will move staff recommendation on this item.
The motion carries, Mr. MPT.
That now approves the balance of our consent item. We're going to the special orders of the day. Consideration of only local uncontested appointments to the city commissions, committees, boards, and city affiliated organizations by mayor and the city council. And consider all uncontested appointments to all commissions except planning commissions and environmental commissions. Does anybody want to make any appointments tonight?
MPT, I have all my commissions filled, but I do want to comment that the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Tina Keely, has been relocated. Family is telling me to another care center, and she's still recuperating from that. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to send our blessings and our prayers to Tina Keely for her quick and speedy recovery.
She's in our prayers, for sure. Anybody else? All right. There's no ordinance or no second readings, Madam City Clerk, or Memorial Germans?
Thank you, Mr. MPT. These are the names that I've received. Henry Leslie Killings, Reverend Cecil Chip Murray, Derek Montreal Estes Senior, Howard Wheaton Junior.
Anybody else want to add? Anybody else?
Yes, I have two to add. Willie Nettles and one of our past employee mother, Arnold Caraway. His mother passed away, Dora Wilson.
Anybody else? All right, let's pray. Father, we pray that you would bless all of those who are bereaved tonight. We pray that you would be with those families. Thank you for the life and the legacy of all of these who you have allowed to pass this way. We pray for their entire family. Give them comfort and give them peace. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Is there any oral communications for matters not listed on the agenda?
No, Mr. MPT.
Anybody out there? Council members request to add items to future agendas?
MPT, I do have a couple of them. One being to the city manager, is there a plan of action, it may be part of the CIP, for playground equipment replacements? And I know that there was something, I talked about that some time ago. I haven't seen that come back as of yet. In addition, I guess it's along with the pouring play at our park playground areas?
Yes, Councilman Hicks, the team has discussed that as part of the CIP. Pieces of that are currently in design for pouring plays. The component apparatus for all of the playgrounds have been assessed. We have a report that was given to us late last year, and all of that ordering has occurred. Any broken parts, if they are still outstanding, it's really, it's a supply chain issue. We're waiting for manufacturers to deliver those. But yes, there is a plan in place, and we have budgeted those in the CIP.
Okay, you got your director.
I just wanted to give another note in regards to that. We're actually gonna, we're looking into a different type of material. We have used pouring plays for quite some time. And when we fill small spots, especially like underneath the swings where the kids stop and they push off and to go, a lot of times, it makes a hole right there in the very center. And to fix that, we have to do a much, much larger area. So they have new technology now that, we met with a vendor on yesterday. And with that new technology, as opposed to, it's just like tiles. So as opposed to, exactly, we have squares that we're actually going to replace that with. They're a little more expensive, but they last a lot longer. We've gone on a couple of field trips to alternative sites to take a look at those. The last one we went to was a school in the City of Long Beach, and they had no scuff marks on their ground at all. And they had had it for ten years at that particular point. So it's definitely something that we are marching towards.
Okay. And then I have another issue regarding potholes. I've received some calls about University Drive between Avalon and Wilmington. It's potholes, and they just want to know, when is that? He's coming up.
You're gonna have to handle this in a minute to make it, you're messing with my record now. Come on now.
The question is, when can they go out to, there's some potholes out there currently that needs to be addressed right now. And just when can the staff can go out there to address the potholes? And when will University Drive be repaved?
We'll, as of now, we'll put that on the list. But our in-house team is addressing potholes on the weekends, on Fridays and Saturdays.
Fridays and Saturdays, okay. All right, thank you. And then, not to mess up with your timing, Callas Park Gazebo, it was supposed to have had that replaced. I'm just looking at the old CIP. What brought all this up? Thank you, Madam Clerk, from all these past meetings that I was able to read and go through, and all the requests that I had put in. I said, wait a minute, I haven't seen none of this stuff come before us yet. So the gazebo is one at Callas Park. Mills Park, I know it's going for construction, but I want to see some type of rendering. The residents have been asking about Mills Park. What is it gonna look like? How is it gonna be presented? So if we can bring something back to this council with some renderings or what it's gonna be for Mills Park and how it's gonna be. Then the other issue is cool, amount of pool covers and the status of the swimming pool covers, and being solar covers for all of our pools. I don't know where that happened. Or, and also our wind screens for the tennis courts. And I know I did speak with the director about that a couple of weeks ago, but don't see it up. And then the last one I have in regards to cameras at Anderson Park. I guess a couple of people have gotten robbed on the tennis court side, and there are no cameras on that end. It's dark on that side. And what are we doing to get that corrected on the tennis court side on, like on Craig John? So those are, I have more, but I'll do the rest of them. I'll talk to the city manager directly on.
Thank you so much, MPT.
Yeah, on the same subject of lights in the parks, to the city manager and your staff, I'd made a request several weeks ago about replacing the lights that were not functioning at Reflections Park. And there's been service requests from people in the neighborhood for that. So do we have anyone on staff who knows if that's been taken care of yet? It's a passive park, not staffed?
We'll have to look into that, council member, and get back to you. So we'll respond and get an update.
Thank you very much. Thank you, MPT. I'm complete.
Thank you. Any other council members want anything? I just want to, again, announce our shredding event that will happen on this Saturday. And then also, the Dymley Institute will have a jazz festival on April twenty-seventh. Dr. Cecil Chip Murray's funeral will be that weekend. And this meeting is adjourned at six twenty-eight. And Cinco de Mayo is on the fifth, the fourth. Cinco de Mayo is on...